Just about six o'clock, I'd remind everybody to please mute your cell phones or turn them off. We're closer to six, okay, time being six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and just for all.
Roll call please, Patty.
Dan?
Here.
Wanda?
Present.
Don?
By phone.
Sherry?
Here.
Joe?
Does anybody have a financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
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 I have none.
No.
Okay, with that, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion by low second by Kettering to approve further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, motion passes. At this time, would anybody care to make public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Mr. Sidlachek, come on forward.
First one, there's a couple items I have are resolutions to delete a couple bridges off the NBIS system, which is a federal system. We replace these two structures with culverts. I noticed they were on the list for a bridge inspection for this year, which they don't need to be inspected anymore since the distances of the size of the culverts, once you get the right spacing, they no longer are considered a structure. I guess all I need is a resolution or a motion on each of these.
Mike, just want to explain to the public where these ones are at.
The one for Westerville. Yes, which one's on there first? The first one on the agenda is north of Mayfield. Approximately four miles and then half a mile west on a township gravel, it was a bridge that the bridge deck was totally bad shape. So we put that one in with, I believe it was three five-foot culverts. The second one would be from Stone Church, actual church, approximately three quarters of a mile west on the county gravel there. It was an old wooden plank bridge, narrow, load rated. We replaced it with three seven footers.
So I would move to approve the resolution to delete structure sixty-eight dash one-five-five dash zero-two-zero.
Second.
Motion in a second to delete structure six-eight-one-five-five-zero-two-zero, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion passes.
And I would move to approve the resolution to delete bridge sixty-eight dash zero-two-four dash zero-zero-eight from NBI.
Second.
Motion in a second to delete six-eight dash zero-two-four dash zero-zero-eight, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes.
Next on the agenda, I have approval of truck replacement. As we all know, we had an accident with one of our trucks at work. It's, the truck is a total loss. I've been doing some research on replacement truck. I found similar ones to what we had. One's already sold, but there's one other one out there, I want to continue looking though. Roughly ninety thousand miles for a oh-eight Freightliner Business Class M2, similar to what we had. Comes with a front plow and also a wing and then also sander attachment for the tailgate, which we'd probably reuse our sander and then our plow. The one thing we would be gaining would be a wing. The price I found on that was fifty-nine-nine.
How much insurance money we get?
I talked to Roger Smith today trying to get some of that nailed down and as of right now, there's no answers yet. We're hoping this week we can hear something back.
We are going to be covered, it's just a matter of the amount.
I don't know them numbers yet, so before I would entertain in purchasing something, I would bring it to the commission. So as of right now, I talked to legislative audit. Anything over fifty thousand, I have to bid. I guess if we want to set a dollar amount, I can write a bid. And we can advertise. I'll write it to where, a spec to where a truck that I would find, I would try to go towards something like that anyways. If nobody would bid, we have no bids received. According to legislative audit that allows us to go and negotiate prices with a dealer, whomever. And like I said, if, if we have a kind of a set dollar amount, I could advertise as that or advertise for a truck and like I said before, we would purchase, I would bring it to the commission.
What's, what's the used truck market like, is it like everything else?
As in price-wise?
Well, everything's overpriced and in low demand.
I was actually pretty surprised for what I was finding, I didn't think it was terrible.
I guess before we move forward, I guess it's a terrible this happened, but what's the commission feel like about price and the new truck, I know that one we got a few years ago that had the underbelly blade.
That was used.
It was, but it still really increased efficiency in the long run, is that something we, we would look at? Doing something like that and just upgrading that one, I know it's not in the plan, but accidents do that. Is that something that you?
Upgrading the truck that we?
Well, you know, instead of purchasing a used one, get a new.
Well, right now, the, the new market is not looking good, it's
Not looking good.
It's like up to two years out. And prices on all that stuff has gone up significantly. Say roughly a cab chassis, you're probably looking in that hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand range and then up to I was talking to Terry with Lincoln County and he's talking up to a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and eighty to ninety just for the snowplow equipment. I'm not saying we need new. I feel we could upgrade with a used truck. Yeah, new would be great because long-term, you know. But right now, I feel a used would be plenty good for us.
So you're asking for our, okay, just to bid for a used truck?
Right.
So you just need a motion just for essentially a used truck?
Well, and I was talking to Rod Fortin Legislative Audit with that and he goes, I really don't need, you guys don't have to make a motion, but you can. I just, we gotta be all on the same page on this.
I would say throw something with specs, you know, with the plow mounts and, and what you would want. Sander attachment and things of that nature, maybe under X amount of miles or year, you know, whatever, put some specs together and start there.
Cause I, I feel, I would like to keep it under a hundred and twenty thousand miles, no older than like a oh-eight is how I feel.
Like how many miles did the one that got wrecked have?
It was roughly like two twenty-four. And that was an oh-eight also. So the one thing we did do is I talked to insurance adjusters. In case we were to find another Business Class M2, same frame specs, we saved all the plow mounts off of the front of that truck so we could have our our matching plow, we're going to save our plow off of that truck.
So this one truck that you've got you viewed or talked to somebody about, that won't be around for very long if you're
If we drag our feet.
We need the truck, right?
Yes, especially right now, we resurrected her nineteen ninety-three Ford Louisville. I, I don't even know if the odometer works anymore. Put it this way, every time you take it out, you gotta add transmission. We did, we had to put tires on it, we checked it over thoroughly with, you know, brakes, airlines, brake lines.
That's the OT inspection.
Well, I, so Mike, it's hard to guess for me what we're going to get in an insurance claim. But it probably is going to represent the value of that other truck. And maybe that's in the forty to sixty thousand dollar range.
I would assume that somewhere in there.
So I would suggest that due to the present economy, if you've got a truck that you're very sure is a reliable truck that you go after, that's my suggestion. I don't see coming back here with what we're gonna do.
But from what legislative audit said, we have to bid it because it's going to be over fifty thousand.
Basically spec this one.
So I would just put together a general, and if you get some, uh, twenty fourteen,
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
That's a better deal than we, we can look at that, so you need our approval to go out for bid for a truck.
So and then, and then we need to kind of set a dollar amount.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Because, okay, so like we have two, we have a twenty twelve Freightliner SD one fourteen and also a twenty sixteen. I did find a few of them on there, which we can't, New Hampshire, we're not going out to New Hampshire to look at a truck.
The one that got wrecked, is that the one you guys rebuilt and made look really nice?
No, no, that one, that one is still around. But anyways, the two new Freightliners that would match our newest Freightliners, well, you're in the eighty-five thousand dollar range. Yeah, that would be great, we'd it'd be great to have that, but I'm not, if you guys feel we can go that far, then let's go for it, but.
I, I would rather that we just get a truck that we're going to have for a while, I mean, it, it almost never works out when you buy the cheapest one you can find because it costs you, you're getting into a busy time of year, gravel and, and.
My biggest thing is looking at the miles.
Have you talked to the other highway superintendents and DOT, see if there, any of them are upgrading? We could work something out with them, I know they gotta put it out on.
Well, I kind of, I kind of mentioned to a few others, while they're in the same boat to where they can't get a truck right now. Because like Lincoln County's, I was interested in theirs, you know, they whether trucks are set up, they can haul fourteen, fifteen ton versus us, we're around that twelve. So it would be nice to haul more, but the drop ax and stuff. But then you're giving up a wing also, so.
I guess I'd be fine with opening up a bid up to ninety thousand. If, if that would.
Maybe I'm just confused, maybe I'm just confused, but usually when you out for bid, we say you can advertise for this. We don't talk anything about price when we approve to bid.
Right.
And then you open the bids and you say, well, these are the prices and then we have to approve one.
Right, but I'm, I'm just asking you guys for kind of a cap on.
Saying that around nineties.
Did you want to put that in your bid advertisement not to exceed?
I can.
Is that, okay, that's your point.
Kind of, kind of the issue though, I think Sherry is, is if, if there's a truck available and apparently there aren't a lot of available and this one's got some things on it that they want. If we have to sit and wait a month for us to come and approve it.
No, but, but the bid process requires the bid to be open and then we have to approve it from there, so we can't get around the time.
I thought you said we could go.
If nobody bids.
I guess. I guess, yeah, we don't even, we wouldn't even have to put a cap on it, I can just bring it to you guys.
I, I wouldn't because if you've got a guy who wants a hundred and ten thousand for a truck and we have our limited a hundred thousand, ten thousand bucks is nothing in this market. So I guess I wouldn't put a cap on it, I would just put your minimum requirements and hope people.
Your mileage and your years and what you want on it.
Yep.
And then.
Your mileage is the important thing.
I would work with the one that you showed us or talked about.
Make sure they're aware.
They might be willing to kind of a good faith effort, I guess, I don't know, but I don't think we can get around the bid process.
Maybe they will lease it to us for two months.
Be fine.
And if they leased it to us for two months and then we made a pre-arranged bid on it, providing nobody beat that bid, you would resolve the problem.
Just thinking. So you need a motion to bid, to advertise.
Yep.
So I would make a motion to give Mike the authority to advertise for a replacement truck.
Second.
Motion a second to go out for bids for replacement, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes.
Last on my list is profile milling for Walstown Road, the last ten miles from Old Fifty going north. Prices have gone up. At the time, to get stuff in for the agenda, I did not have any the bid was not made yet for, for this, but anyways, prices have gone up since last year. Not as bad as I was thinking they were going to. It's like a one-inch profile mill. It's thirty-five cents a square yard. Anyways, roughly with trucking, without trucking would be fifty-two-hundred, five thousand two hundred and ten dollars and seventy-three cents a mile. At one inch.
Would be similar to what we did. Where by Mission Hill, one inch.
Well, no, that's, I'm talking a mill.
Grained it up.
Well, not grinding it up, milling, milling off one inch, I guess I should have started there.
To set the profile of it.
Profile mill is, you take off inch, inch and a half. Mill comes in, mills that off, they have automatics on there. It takes out the imperfections, that way when you go back to paving it. Essentially, the paver still has automatics, but your ride will be that much better yet. You're also saving money in paving, yes, you're spending money to do the profile mill, but you are also saving money in the long run because you're not having to fix all them imperfections with new asphalt.
So it takes out the
It takes all your, takes your highs out.
Ruts and, and such.
This will be the first time we've tried this.
Well, we've done it back in twenty, twenty thirteen, the Volan Road from four-four-eight to the county line.
How did that work?
It's holding up really nice.
And you, you've done some research on this too, I mean, if you think it's a good idea, I would support it.
And then also like with this milling, if you guys approve us to go forward with this. You'll see, if you go out there and look at it, you'll see some places where the mill never hit, you know, there's that much of an imperfection in that spot, you know. So some of it, it's not all going to come out, but.
So your plan would be to take an inch off and then come back and put how much back on?
Inch to an inch and a half, it depends on how the profile ends out. Like I said, for, for profiling one inch is five thousand two hundred and ten dollars, seventy-three cents a mile. Inch and a half, if we would have to, if it's that out of whack to where we would have to go an inch and a half profile. Then we're up to seven thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars a mile.
And that's with us doing the trucking?
That's with us doing the trucking.
And how many miles are we talking?
Ten. So essentially just the milling for that ten miles would be approximately what one mile of asphalt would cost, which I feel it would wash in the end.
Was this in your budget for this year to do this?
Yes, well, this is.
The five-year plan do.
The paving was not necessarily.
Was, but not the profiling, the profiling, I can't say it's going to a hundred percent wash if we had profiled, but I, I do feel it would be darn close.
Well, probably use less asphalt.
Less mix.
Be a smoother surface to put it on and a better ride, you know, I'm, I'm all for you know, and we've already had this happen or used this out in Volan with good results, I think it's something we should look into.
You know, and the other concern always is if you keep adding pavement, pretty soon your road surface
You're getting so tall.
That drop off where you catch a tire and so this gets you back down
Where you should be.
And then you can put a good surface back on, so that'd be ten miles and you, have you talked to the state about their trucking plan?
I'd have talked to them. It's sounding like gravel would be coming out of the shrum pit, don't know that for sure yet. There's three, three options there, well, they could head east out of the shrum pit to Walstown Road and then head north on Walstown, or they could head east out of the pit to four forty-three, the two miles of gravel to forty-six. Or they could head west to the Jim River Road, which would hook them back into eighty-one and go that route. I guess I'm going to push for gravel, you know, taking gravel.
Either way, there would be a, an agreement where the road's put back into the condition it was prior to the project, right?
So are you looking just for a general nod for this or?
Well, this here, I was just feeling you guys out, if this is something we want to do, I will get and talk to Hutchinson County will get their bid and I'll have to bring it to you guys and have you guys approve their bid.
Okay.
Everybody feels like it's something that we should pursue, then I'll, I'll get all the info brought up, so.
I think for this road, it's a good application.
Well, that's all I got.
We got one question, what do you anticipate the increased cost of fuel will be for the last four months of this fiscal year?
But repeat that again, Don?
What do you anticipate the increased cost of fuel will be to run your operation for the next four months of this fiscal year of our budgeted year?
How can he guess that?
Pretty easily.
Okay, how?
I guess we, we bid the fuel, it's
We're locked in on the price.
Yeah, we're locked in at, at three, three-twelve, I believe.
Okay.
For the year, yeah, we're locked in at three-twelve, I'm almost positive it was three-twelve until January thirtieth of next year.
I bet next year won't.
Yeah, see if they'll extend that another year.
Yeah. Last year, I think we're paying two-ten or something a gallon and trust me, January, the last day that we could buy off that bid, we filled.
I'll give you a little, just a short deal, I was inquiring about the purchase of a boat. And those people that bought the boat ordered the boat, paid the money down last summer for delivery this spring just got an increase in their price. Even though they had a contract in, in an order. So I don't know what that tells you, but.
That's one thing that
It's not contagious.
That did change on our bids like for bridges for this next year. So what we ordered last year for this year, the trucking is locked in while not on the new bids. Yeah, things are gonna go the other way.
Thanks, Mike. Well, thanks, Mike, have fun this weekend.
This weekend?
No.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, item six, carpal case management system.
Does everybody have a copy of the proposal, I believe it was submitted?
Yes, sir.
So she, she will. Her choice. So the reason I'm before you tonight is to propose that the board or the commission approve our office to contract with Carpel Solutions to purchase a case management system for the state's attorney's office. Currently, our office does not have a case management system, we store our files via a server, which is in our building and that server is not really a case management type software, it's more of just a file manager, file system where we store like Windows files. So it's like thinking, think of it as making a file on your computer and just saving it, that's the system that we have right now. There are drawbacks to that system, which includes security. The system is not backed up and so we found out late last week, it's very easy to delete about a hundred thousand files on accident. And so those were recovered fortunately, so.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Sorry, Wanda, so this
Okay.
This system is a cloud-based system, which is run off of browser that any attorney or secretary or support staff in the office can utilize with the internet connection. And so this will allow us to be pretty much paper-free in our office when it comes to storing files, to preparing documents and going about our normal course of business in our office. Like I said, it's a web-based cloud database, so that means that our program will be run by Carpel and their engineers and technologists. It will not be, need to be serviced by the county IT people. So it'll be run by Carpel, it is backed up throughout the country, I believe they have four different server locations throughout the country. And so by allowing them to store our files, if a server goes down in one area, it's backed up throughout the country and there's no possibility that it could be, you know, hopefully lost. This program will allow us to auto-generate files and documents for court, it'll allow us to have a form that we have just set for a specific charge, it'll allow us just to click the defendant and automatically produce the document, saving our secretaries vast amount of time at preparing legal documents. Cause right now, they have to go in, click numerous buttons to find the file, find the defendant, create a new file for each case, which can be time-consuming. In this new program, once a defendant is put in the system. Put in the system, they're in there forever and you can just add another case to their name, so there's no more creating duplicates of the same person. Again, saving time and it's more efficient. By going paperless, currently we are on the verge of having a storage issue issue currently. When it comes to storing old files, it is policy of our office to keep files for at least ten years and as you can. Expect with seven, eight hundred cases a year, there's boxes and storage, and so we come, we have problems. Getting those storage issues taken care of and it's time-consuming going pull an old file out of the storage room that was recently brought back, so by. Getting this program, we can put all old files eventually on the server. All new files will automatically be put on, so they will be digital from the very beginning. We did talk to the IT people that the county is contracted with, they approve of this program over what we have. What we have right now is an old system, the server itself is very old, the server itself is running out of storage. I'm sure the commission is aware that earlier last year, we had to. Do a patch fix to increase our storage amount because we ran out. And so that was about six thousand dollars just for that temporary fix. Speaking with Laura, who's our legal administrator, she informs me that. We currently pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month for her server access at our current building. To replace that server alone. Is about. Twenty-five thousand dollars, and so that server has been with the with the state's attorney's office from the very beginning from when we went to. Technology, and so just keeping it updated, as I said, we have to add, just had to spend six thousand more dollars last year to add more space to it. And in the future, we're running out of space again, so we're gonna have to do it again a year from now, probably. The files that we get from the computer, from the law enforcement agencies, the vast majority of those are large files, the. Body cams and dash cams from law enforcement are many gigabytes, and so that takes up a lot of space with this cloud program. As you saw in the. Proposal, we have a certain amount of space that comes right away, and then once we need an upgrade, I believe it's only a thousand more dollars for an extra.
It's what?
Another two terabytes. Is another thousand dollars to where it was six thousand dollars for for two new terabytes for our current system. So it's a price decrease with this system to upgrade for more storage compared to what we have now.
And then thirty. Am I reading that right? Thirty-two thousand dollar per hundred terabyte maintenance fee essentially?
Go back to my.
That how they charge for that or?
What are you looking at, Joe?
If you look at the, after the fixed year costs, then the optional items below, it's additional storage. After included two terabytes per terabyte per year is a thousand. Then below that additional storage after included two terabytes per one hundred terabytes.
So we'll have the two terabytes right away, and then if, I believe that hundred terabytes. For thirty-two thousand is for counties such as Los Angeles, Phoenix.
Yeah, how big is your server now? Do you know what your file size is like today?
I believe around two, and that's for old files dating all the way back two thousand and eleven, so we're expecting at least two thousand and eleven. So we're expecting, once we get this new system, if it's approved, two terabytes should last us, you know, quite a while. But if we do get to that two terabyte limit, another terabyte is a thousand dollars, that'll last us for some time as well. And so. That would be the cost for it at this time, and you see the current bid, the thirty-four thousand dollar. One-time cost and then the first. Cost for the annual rate was also included, so we get thirty-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-five dollar. First time, first year cost, and then. Little support services would be already budgeted in our in our budget, I believe already, so there'd be no other expenses that need to be budgeted.
Would there be a corresponding reduction in other office supplies? If you weren't making paper files?
Yes, and so I had Laura again give me some numbers, and she says we spend about. Twenty-four hundred dollars a year on paper alone, and that's. I forget how big, how many reams that is, but that's quite a bit, I believe we went through. You know, a pretty decent amount here recently with that trial I was in. And so we also purchased flash drives, which are used for discovery purposes, which includes sending evidence, police reports. To attorneys, defense attorneys, and so. Those aren't always returned to our office, and so we're operating at a loss when it comes to flash drives. We spent about twenty-eight hundred dollars, twenty-nine hundred dollars a year just in flash drives alone to supply discovery, which is required in our office and. League, we are legally bound to do. And so that's an expense that could be eliminated by this program, because when it comes to discovery. Since everything's in the cloud, all the evidence is in the cloud, you click on the defendant's case. You assign that case to a defense attorney, and then all the discovery is electronically sent via email. To the defense attorney, there's no need for paper copies, there's no need for flash drives, everything's sent to defense counsel without. Any.
And defense counsel can print them out.
And defense counsel can download it, print it out, and it'll be accessed via a link that they click on to download everything. So we'll be saving thirty-three thousand dollars a year just on flash drives alone. External hard drives, again, we had the larger cases, they don't fit on those little thumb drives, we have to buy big. External hard drives and those are a hundred and twenty bucks a piece, you know, so just to get, and there's many cases that use those as well and. Not all defense counsel return the flash drives at the end of the case, and so that's another. That we are facing when it comes to.
Yes.
Didn't wanna say any names.
Returning your. Drives?
Yes, I also bring ones over, so they have them. I am not so computer literate, however, that I can just click on a link and. Get it, I have to have people for that.
So so Tyler, now the defense attorneys may have access to this system where they could log on remotely.
No, they don't have access to log on, from my understanding is, once we send it to their email, they get a link. That says this case is now available, download your discovery, they click on it and it just downloads. So they're, they have no access to sign in and look at stuff, so they can just.
Just have a link to that, those files.
Yeah, that's my understanding of the program. So, you know, discovery, when it comes to the. Is one of the most important things that we do, if discovery is not sent. A case can be dismissed because an error on prosecution's part, and we don't want that. And so that's one of the very most important things that this program, in my opinion, will do and allow us. To track what we send to attorneys, there'll be a documentation record of when it was sent, if it was opened by defense counsel, because a lot of the time. I don't wanna mention names, but. They say, you know, I didn't get this, I don't think you sent it to me, well, now we can say, oh, no, I sent this to you last Tuesday at three o'clock. So we'll have that access to say, everything was sent, this case should not be dismissed, so. We feel that will be a huge benefit to our office with this program. Another benefit, currently. Our office schedules felony court, we are in charge of making sure all the calendars are done for each week. And we supply that information to the clerk of courts, right now I believe we're running just a Microsoft calendar, and as you can. It's not the best way to do it, so with this program, for each defendant, there's a special place where you put the court date. And then you can search the court date, and then all defendants that are set for that date just get printed off, and it's a nice calendar, gets sent to defense counsel. Gets sent to the court, and so another very efficient time-saving. Matter that this program can provide.
So will this program anticipably, anticipatorily. Keep you from having to hire extra people?
That is the hope. I was put under this program by the Union County State's Attorney, he's informed me, and he sent me a list of all the benefits. Think of for this program, and one of them is to have the efficiency of another two support staff. Just because everything is automated pretty much in the system, all you have to do, fill in the blanks, put, click the buttons, there's no more. Of drafting documents. And it just lightens the load where they can focus on current cases instead of having to go back and. Make sure everything is closed down or filed or everything's electronic, and so he feels that was a major. Contribution to his office and the fact, when he told me, if it wasn't for this program, he wouldn't be working as a prosecutor anymore, I know Jerry's been doing it for over. Fifteen years, so he, his office benefits from it, and he's had it since two thousand and fifteen. And so, like it said in the proposal, this program is used in six other counties in South Dakota, many hahas on the. Verge of getting it, they signed their contract, they're just getting it implemented, so I feel. And another benefit of the program is once more counties get involved in the program, you can share data with each other. And so time-saving, we'll be able to see what's going on in any haha union with this defendant, and so. Again, very informative and. I think it'd be beneficial. Yep, and so, last thing I'd like to point to is. This program has the ability to allow us. To bring. A victim advocate back to our office, or maybe for the very first time. Right now, our office utilizes the Division of Criminal Investigations, Victim Advocate Gretchen Slate. And we only use her on big cases, you know, those higher level cases, and that's because we just don't have the. Staff right now to have somebody just dedicated straight to victim advocate, somebody that can talk to a victim, walk them through the process. This program will allow us, there's a special feature of it, straightforward victim advocate, so. We just hired that. Legal assistant to take over Lisa's spot, and it's our goal to implement for part of her position to be a victim advocate, and I think with this. Program. It will streamline streamline that ability for her to jump into that role and be able to. Serve the needs of the victims, because under South Dakota law, victims have rights. And one of the important things is to make sure that the victims understand those rights, that they're they're able to talk to our office. And so by doing this, this program will allow us to contact victim, email, text messaging, setting up appointments, making sure. The victim knows how their case is going through the system, and I'm sure if you talk to a criminal attorney, defense attorney or a victim. Maybe the most important thing is how a victim is involved in the case. And so I think by doing this, we'll be able to bring it back to our office, we don't have to rely on the. Attorney General's Office, DCI, we can in-house this position. And so, you know, I covered the costs. Of what it currently costs for us to comply with what we have to do, and I think I've addressed how. It'll save us money in the long run, it'll save time and it'd be more efficient for our staff and attorneys. So I would just ask for a motion to allow our office to contract with Carpel so we can purchase the system.
And this can be paid for with ARPA funds?
Yes, this program will also allow us to work remotely. And so I believe that's one of the criteria for government funds for COVID is allowing. Purchase equipment to repair remotely, I know in terms of JD AI, Judge Garing has instituted a policy that if a juvenile is arrested. Or some, for some offense, or if a juvenile is brought before the court, she expects to have a hearing at noon the following day. You know, as I'm sure all of you are aware, me, Deb and Rob are all over the place, you know, we have court three, four times a day. And so this will allow us to repair remotely if we're out of town, I know I had to go to Redfield a couple of weeks ago, visit a victim. You know, and I wasn't around, but if I need to be in court telephonically, I would have my computer with me, I could appear, I'd have the file right there. And then when I met with the victim, I would have my computer to go over her case instead of carrying a box to Redfield, and so. That ability to appear remotely in the terms of the unforeseeable future of how COVID is gonna be. You know, I think is another added value to this case, the fact that we can log in from anywhere, there's an internet connection, I think it's very huge. And I think as a society. That's the route we're going, and I think it's very important that our office keeps up with the times and is available. To adapt to this technological advanced, technologically advanced. A system that we are creating, the courts are going towards that, you know, remote access, digital format.
And is it allowing the. Prosecutors to appear remotely that makes it eligible for ARPA funds?
Yes, yes, as I've explained.
So before any motions are made. The phone calls I've sat in on the ARPA, and you said in with District Three as well is, is what they're. Advising counties to do is to use the ARPA funds to pay for county employee salaries. Because what that does is all of the federal bid laws and everything that's associated with federal dollars. Do not have to be applied to salaries, and we have over five million dollars in salaries that we pay every year for the county. So if a motion is made, I would suggest that we don't take it out of ARPA funds. Knowing that essentially the money is coming from freed-up dollars because of ARPA funds, so it's kind of.
That's kind of a whole different reporting than two.
So. It 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 depends, and if you guys wanna take it out of our events, can we defend it, are we gonna be okay? I absolutely think we will. But I think certainly any road projects we do, we need to be paying out of general fund dollars.
Dress something really quick, Sherry, too, on that line. The reason I wanna bring this to your attention as soon as possible is because we're speaking with the representative from Carpel. From the moment a contract is signed to when it's implemented at the state's attorney's office is about eleven months. And so because counties are seeing the need, and state's attorney's offices, government offices are seeing the need for this digital format. Everybody's jumping on board, you know, so everybody's using the ARPA funds to purchase this program. And so I just want the commission to be aware of that eleven-month turnaround from the moment the contract's signed. To when it'll be implemented, and then implementation also includes a week-long training session where Carpel comes into our office. And for a week straight, they walk us through the program, they convert all our files and. Train each individual person on Carpel, so that's also included in the price.
Question I have is. Retrieving our files, let's say there, let's say it doesn't work and we wanna go back to a server, or there's another vendor that. We wanna try down the road, what's that process or how? You know, easy or difficult is it to retrieve our own files?
From my understanding. They are still Microsoft files, which are stored in a Carpel system or Adobe files stored in a Carpel system, so I'm assuming, I haven't talked, so I don't wanna say for certain. I'm assuming that those files can be recovered and given back to us at any time.
Good, and contracts are year-to-year essentially.
It's a one-time fee, and then that forty-three every year would be a recurring cost.
Thank you.
You're an excellent salesperson.
Thank you.
Well, I think.
Would cybersecurity be, have any impact on this process?
You know, they did mention.
Do we have any liability?
I'm sure it was covered, maybe it wasn't covered in the packet per se during my presentation with them. They really touched on how secure this is because of the. The. The backup programs that they do have, that it's at four or five different. Locations throughout the country, so if one goes down, you know, it's backed up in another, so you'd have to hack all of them. For there to be a problem, and I don't think there was ever any issue, he pointed out, of course, he wouldn't use a salesman, but. Any issue with security at all, and that's the reason.
There's no way you can guarantee it, but you've covered. Another good reason why.
Yeah, and security is the biggest, like I said, ours isn't backed up right now. And so this will allow us never to be able to accidentally delete something and delete eleven thousand files.
I was gonna mention, we probably should have two servers there. So it's a twenty-five thousand dollar figures.
Yeah.
Really fifty.
Yeah. So there's servers throughout, I, I'm not sure, I can't recall. Really wasn't the.
And this needs to be paid for in next year's budget? Baitment now?
He said we pay half. Sign the contract. When it goes live.
Is that Deb not talking into her microphone?
It'll, it'll take their entire staff to get them up and running.
Yeah.
So.
So as you can see in the program, the, the proposal is used throughout the country in big counties such as Mercer County, Maricopa County in Arizona. And Los Angeles in California, you know, hundreds of attorneys in their office. So they're able to. Go in there and Carpe will personally train each and every one of them. And Don, just to go back to your concern about, you know, security, there's no page numbers listed, but it's. Two, three pages before the proposal numbers talks about the security of Carpe. There's a map of the country with, where each server. Has a, or each region that has a server and it's fully backed up. And hosted by, you know, encrypted government. Programs.
You ready for a motion? I'd move approval of the request to engage with. Carpe Case Management System as proposed by Mr. Larson.
Second.
Motion in a second to move the Carpe services, further discussion. I have one, one thing, not going to have it hold anything up, but prior to a contract, I would like you to look into. Transfer data down the road.
Yeah.
To make sure. But that. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Okay, item seven, Dallas Keller rezone.
Evening. This is the last of the proposed RT rezones had to be pushed back by the applicant. This is four parcels they have on the west side of eighty-one, north side of three hundred and seventh street. That add up to almost seventeen acres. So the applicant applicants requesting to rezone the following properties from rural transitional to moderate density residential district. Said property is legally described as Anderson's Edition. Located in the southeast quarter and Leach's Edition in the southeast quarter. As per plat recorded in book S seven, page forty-four and the north two hundred and seventeen feet of the east eight hundred and eighty-seven feet. Except the east three hundred seventy-five feet of Lot A in the southeast quarter. And Lot A of the southeast quarter, except the west one thousand. Six and seventy-four hundred feet and accept the east three hundred and seventy-five feet of the north four hundred feet. And accept the north two hundred feet of the north four hundred feet. Say that again, the north two hundred feet of the north four hundred feet and accept the north two hundred seventeen feet of the east eight hundred and eighty-seven feet. Less the east three hundred and seventy-five feet, all located in. Section twenty-four Township ninety-four North Range fifty-six West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine one one address is three oh six nine nine US Highway eighty-one. Yankton, South Dakota, five seven oh seven eight.
Okay, is there any questions from the board at this time? That I'll open up to public comment. If anyone in the audience care to make a comment on this proposed rezone. Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. And we will conclude the first reading of the rezone at this time. Second reading is going to be scheduled for when, Gary? The fifteenth. Okay, that I'd take a motion to move into Board of Adjustment.
So moved. I'll second.
Backwards now. Motion by Fox, second by Lowe's to go into Board of Adjustment. Further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in Board of Adjustment. Item eight, Sudbeck CUP.
Good evening, Nick Moser, I represent the Sudbacks. And I'll be, I'll be pretty brief. This is one of those planned unit developments. And it's a little tricky because the original plan is apparently. In the cloud with Mr. Larson's data. So talked to the developer. No objection. Didn't really know much about the specifics of the plan. All the lots have been sold, so I don't think the developer has a whole lot of concern. I think you saw in your packet that the homeowners association did take a vote and approve this. It's really consistent with. What you see out in that PUD anyways. And, and meets all the standards for a conditional use. You know, he's, he's just building a little bit larger. Garage out there. There's no traffic issues, noise, garbage, sanitation. None of that, so. Nick, it went out eight to one at planning and zoning. There was a few questions just about the, the missing. You know, rules of the road for the PUD, but. That, that was it. So would entertain any questions and ask for your support?
Questions from the board. Okay, that I'll. Open this up to public comment. Would anybody in the audience care to make a comment on this proposed CUP? Hearing and seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and, and well.
There was one, one vote against. Was there a reason? That Dennis voted against it, do you remember? It's been a while.
Yeah. Yeah, best of my recollection, it just kind of. Just kind of funky because we don't have the rules and I think that's what it was, yeah.
Gary, do you know when this PUD was initially set up and it was originally zoned as a planned unit development?
Yeah, it was basically set up. It was one of the first PUDs, might have been the first PUD. That was ever done after you, you had a zoning ordinance. So it's been quite a while.
Two thousands.
Literally the first year, I believe.
As I recall, there, there wasn't a, a plan available either. It couldn't be found any place with.
Correct.
Any bank or any.
And so we're going to talk about in the strategic plan meeting, how we want to address these in the future if this situation arises again, but. But, but that's the issue. If you recall, last year, we had another neighbor in the same, same subdivision. That this is the same process we went through.
The developer doesn't, he doesn't have a copy of this, the guy who.
We asked him and he knows.
Interesting. Alright.
Do you want me to walk through these or are you going to do these?
Yeah, I can go through these. I was gonna just note too that I think typically. These things could be handled at the planning and zoning by modifying a PUD, but. Beans, there's not, I, I guess I support the process that it went through and having the HOA weigh in on that. Meant quite a bit. So with that, requirement seventeen, teen three, twenty-three and twenty-nine are met. Applicants wanting to build an accessory structure. So notices were sent out. The hearing was attended, the pass planning and zoning six to one ingress and egress exists. Right-of-way parking is not required, no refuges, utility, required utilities are present. Screening and buffering is not required. There's no signs. Setbacks are met and it, it does fit the general compatibility with the adjacent properties according to the findings of fact. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Clemish, second by Kettering to approve further discussion. Roll call vote please, Patty.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Motion passes.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you. I was gonna say, you can't sit down. Okay, so item nine, Greck and CUP.
Nick Moser, again, I don't think I've been in front of this group for two years and I'm here back to back. So that's just the way it goes. I represent the Greck and Halsted Group. They're. Building a, a, basically a twin home, John Halsted and Liz Greck and are brother and sister. So. They have. Some vacation properties in the area. And it's just a good place to, to retire. So that's really the plan. I think it, it certainly. Is appropriate for NR two, certainly fits into what's a pretty standard CUP out there. Meets all the section, you know, seven oh seven, eighteen oh five, meets all those requirements as far as. Ingress, egress, traffic, septic noise, all that good stuff. So. I believe that went through planning and zoning unanimous. And I would take any questions and ask for your support. Thank you.
Any questions from the board at this time?
Nope.
With that, I'd open up to public comment. Would anybody in the audience care to make a comment on this proposed CUP? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion. I'll go ahead and walk through the findings of fact quickly. As Mr. Moser stated, the requirements of, of the applicable sections have been met. Publications went out, it passed seven zero, planning and zoning. Ingress and egress will not have a negative effect on traffic flow. There's no off right-of-way parking required. Refuge services not required, utilities are present. No screening or buffering, signs, et cetera, required setbacks are met and it does meet the general compatibility with the surrounding area. That I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Clemish, second by Lowe's to approve the Greck and CUP, further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in regular session. Item ten, approved February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Just wait, hang, hang on a second. There was something that needed to be taken out. It was in there from. Gosh, let me find it. I think the number down, was it twenty-two eighty-eight?
Yep, twenty-two eighty-eight.
Twenty-two eighty-eight C, that action needs to be removed.
That wanted to modify your motion?
I will, I will move to approve the February fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Minutes with the removal of the stated. Which I didn't write down.
Action twenty-two eighty-eight C.
That one.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to approve amended minutes, removing action twenty-two eighty-eight C, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Claims.
I would move approval of the claims.
Prove is there?
Second.
Second by Fox, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll do February payroll.
Move to approve February payroll.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Juneteenth holiday. We've talked about a few times, the state has now. Approved it or added it to their holiday bank. So we need to. Have some discussion on how the county wants to address that. Questions, comments, concerns, I can go first. I know, you know, we looked at our holiday calendar with the handbook. Kind of picked our holidays. I know this is a new one that's been added. My. Kind of initial thought is if, if we want to mimic the state, I think that's what we should just simply put in our handbook. Right now, we, we don't with what we have approved. I don't know what other thoughts are on that.
So the other holiday we do not recognize is Native American Day because we give the day after Thanksgiving off as that day. We do recognize Good Friday, which the state does not. The feds don't either. So right now the feds recognize eleven holidays, the state has eleven holidays and the county has eleven holidays. Because we count Good Friday and the day after Thanksgiving as substitutes for those days.
The state also traditionally gives other days off too, like this and the government usually gives it.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Dan.
For Christmas, Patty. I mean, there are other dates that are almost, almost always given off, but aren't. Quote unquote official holidays recognized.
Yeah, it depends.
I think that started with Dennis Dugard, actually, was.
Yeah, they haven't all done it. So.
With the state, it being a state holiday, I know we've heard from department heads before. Saying there isn't a whole lot that they can accomplish, some of them when the state systems are shut down.
And that would cover certain departments, not all.
Well, yeah, but I mean, are you gonna send the treasure?
So then, do you want to trade Juneteenth for the day after Thanksgiving? Because those are normally a workday. But I think that I, I wasn't in on the handbook making portion of the. Um, commission, but it.
That was decided.
But I think. I think that that was made up so people could spend more time with their families.
And it's a busy travel day too.
So probably the decision tonight is, do we add Juneteenth or don't we, or do we align with the state? For everything. Those are the two poss- possibilities that we see tonight.
Or stay the way we are.
Well, and that, and that would essentially be not giving Juneteenth.
I get that.
And I don't know if we need a motion for that either, Wanda, I think we would need an affirmative if we wanted to add it. You know, my personal preference would be if we want to have this discussion, it would be at a, um. Strategic planning type meeting, we set the number of holidays we want to do and if, if it wants to change, we would probably pull the, um. County employees, as we did with the, how we set these holidays would be my preference. But I don't. You know, kind of the Sherry's point too, we don't observe, uh, Native American Day and I. I feel in the state of South Dakota, it'd be. By more applicable to observe Native American Day than Juneteenth.
I, I don't think that that's at all accurate, I mean, Juneteenth has a. You know, a historical perspective for. A segment of the population of South Dakota, um, and partially, I think the reason it was placed in is to. To maybe help, uh, to right a historic wrong. And so I guess I don't see an issue with adding it as another day. I guess that would be my, I guess that would be my preference, so.
Do you want to make that a motion, Dan?
Sure, I guess I'd move to add Juneteenth as a holiday for the county.
Motion to add Juneteenth, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Moving on to, uh, abatements.
The two abatements, um, the one for one oh eight. Was they moved, uh, the mobile home and the value wasn't taken off, and then the other one was it should be an exempt. And that was two thousand. I don't have the.
Twenty-two ninety-four seventy-four.
Yes.
So I had moved to approve the two applications for abatement for nineteen seventy-seven Ritz craft fourteen by sixty-eight mobile home for a hundred eight dollars and fifty-two cents. And property located west ten feet, lot thirteen and all lot fourteen block two Christianson Heights addition. For two thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars seventy-four cents.
The motion to approve the abatements, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, brings us to item twelve, public comment, would anybody in the audience care to make a public comment? Come forward.
I'm gonna go talk here, I'm here to address some issues here to the county commissioners. Dealing with, uh, redistricting in the, in the county here.
Just fill your last name, sir.
In front of you have the map from nineteen eighty from a redistricting of four, uh, twenty-nine precincts and hasn't been updated since nineteen eighty. But some other things are coming to issue too about redistricting in our county, county here, district eighteen. We had it on, uh, from Wakanda to Irene. For voting purposes, we're wondering how we're gonna set up the guidelines in our county to vote in these precincts. And why some of these precincts have like fourteen has four townships. Where like I live in Leesterville, Leicester was divided in two town, two precincts, eighteen and thirteen. So my question is, are we gonna update these maps for the precincts? And also about a new district going on here. Because.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Because, um, the people Wakana could vote for legislators, but they can't vote for the county sheriff, they can't vote for county auditor. But yeah, they, they still have to vote in Yankton County here yet. The people from Wakanda and Irene.
No.
According to Secretary State and, and Peter told me they, that's their right to vote for our county. Actually told me, so.
Just for the legislative.
Legislature, that's it, that's all I'm saying.
Yep.
But where they're gonna vote, that's my question.
In Clay County. They'll vote, they'll have a ballot with all those, the Yankton County legislative districts, they will vote it in Clay County.
Okay. What about the, the, the update map, this is nineteen eighty, this map since it hasn't been updated, so.
We don't go by precincts anymore, we go by vote centers. We have six. And there is one in Utica, um. Out at the lake, Leesterville. Um, Mayfield Store, Gable Community Center, the fire station and the city hall.
And anybody can vote on any one.
And any one of them.
And apps and T ballot too, they can forty-five days.
So we're not gonna bother updating this or anything?
No, because we still have those precincts, because those, the individuals that come and register, they go in those precincts. But they don't, we don't have them as votes that vote precincts anymore. We have the vote centers.
Okay. We're just trying to figure out why fourteen only has four townships in versus.
You know what, this map was years and years and years ago and I wasn't employed here, so I have no idea.
Okay. Because we have a Hutchinson County map here, they, they invited themselves back up in the districts too, new districts themselves, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure why they.
This is like their map and ours is like, I, I'm just saying, it's, we're just kind of wondering because. Like if, if we are, we are using this then for precinct committee men and women.
Yes.
So therefore, if we are using it, then we have to identify the fact that fourteen is very underrepresented. I mean, it's got four township.
Yeah.
And it's only, and you only get, you get one precinct man and one precinct woman. That's all, so we are just trying to figure out where we go if we get this information so we can understand.
I'm sorry, all I'm hearing is dead air.
That's because I'm five foot one, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Now, the, the map of Hutchinson County you have is probably where their commissioners come from because they have.
Districts.
Districts for their commissioners where we don't, we are all at large.
Right.
So, yeah.
So I'm just showing, I was just showing this though, as far as. So whether we're voting centers or not, we're still having precinct committee men and women, so if this is determined. By the county or who is that determined by? Because it's not a good representation of the population, that's the thing.
How about if you write your number on this piece of paper, I don't want it to be recorded and, and I will do something to get you some information.
Does the precinct go by?
Valley, just a second, just, just a second. But I don't, I don't think we have to change anything, those townships are in that precinct fourteen.
Why?
Great. So I, I think we need to understand the process around.
Yes.
What sets them up.
Right, yeah, that's what we're looking for.
From there and see if.
Because the answer that this was done a long time ago and then we don't know why it was done is really not answering the question, that's all.
Yeah.
Just, we're just like this, kind of trying to go now, how?
Where do we go here?
Okay.
I can't, well, I will check, I will check in, I'll look back on our minutes and, and see and, and how they were, um. Programmed then or designed or, and I will let you know, if you want to give me a phone number.
We did, and Patty, we have been in to visit, many different people have been in to visit and we've gotten different information each time. So that's why we're here today, because we, we're getting different information.
On which, on?
On this precinct map information.
Okay.
So we're just trying to get some clarification.
If you want, we can get, I will send you or you can come in. We did get a map just last week. Of just that.
Okay, oh, good.
So we can give you that too.
Right, which that won't still change the precinct though, right, so that's, so we still have that. Well, yeah, we already have that, yeah.
Have that already, that map.
But, oh, you do, I did give you that.
Well, I got it sent from South Florida State.
Oh, okay.
Secretary of State sent it to me.
Okay.
So. My, our biggest concern is they're not getting much representative in fourteen for county committee men and women. They only get two people, both parties, four people total.
Okay.
Versus four townships where like, like I said, eighteen and thirteen, I got two in my county and two in the one below me, that's, you know, that's.
Got to believe it was population based at one time, but it, not to say it doesn't need to be updated.
That's what I, I believe it was, I mean, if you look at twenty-six, that has thousands of people in it and that one. And, and if this is updated and does go by population, I would expect to see. A lot more concentration in the city and the lake area and probably really less rural representation. If it's based on population, which I don't know, but if that's the case, it'll barely, very likely shift. To a lot more representation of the city, a lot more in the lake area and less in the rural area, if we do change it.
Right.
Based on population.
Yeah, and if we could just look at that process and see, I think it's worth looking into to update so that we have good representation.
Great.
Yeah.
So with that, yeah, we won't have any decisions tonight or information, but will.
And I will, I will call you, I'll look at it tomorrow and. I'll call you with the information or if you want to come and get it.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to make public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, uh, commissioner updates. Wanda, I'll start with you since you're.
Um, don't have anything much to share, I know that Dan and I were gonna meet with the sheriff and go through the jail, but I have been. Indisposed for the last two days, so I know that didn't get done. By me.
Great.
Don, I'll just move on this way. I, I think, uh, on the side of some really good news, uh, Yangs and Drive announced, uh, an expansion in, in Yankton of a. Of a, a business that will, I think ultimately hire another hundred or so employees and, uh. Increase our tax roll. I think that's it.
Oh, I'll give a quick, we. We, uh, attended the ditch board meeting last week, this week, last week. Last week. And, uh. Went well, there was, um. Couple of action items to get, uh, some cleaning done and, and I've started a bid process with. An engineering firm that handles it for Clay County, they're gonna fly the ditch and so we're gonna have them fly a portion of ours and look, put a bin packet together with that, so.
Joe, I did, I did miss one. I attended a, a meeting, uh, with, uh, Senator Thune out at, uh.
Cody's.
Yeah, Napa Junction.
Or Napa.
And he talked about, we talked about many issues, he. Shared his opinions on them and. Lucky Dory.
Glad you're. A little more optimistic than I am, Don, but.
So we, we finally have our super, first supervisor training for this, uh, Friday, it's been canceled twice now because of illnesses. Um, but it is on schedule and we, we look, uh, good to go on that. Uh, Dan's probably gonna mention ten fifty-three getting killed, which is the half cent.
They all got killed.
Cell stacks and, um, thirteen oh six is still alive, which is the rural access infrastructure. Which would give another fifty million dollars to that program over five years, which is ten million a year. And when you think about that compared to the big program, which only gets fifteen. This would be for small structures, now will it make that, that mark? Hmm, I don't know, um, but I did my best to fight for it, so we'll see how that goes, but. That's about, and you can finish on all the other ones that got downed.
Pretty much, uh, hasn't been really great for counties, uh, in the funding process. It's about. That's about standards, so.
It was kind of tough.
Well, if you notice, uh, on the national level, uh, there's even some, uh, proposals for doing with the state, uh, fuel tax.
Mm-hmm. Uh, two more quick things I forgot to mention, department head meeting tomorrow at nine A M. I think it's gonna be kind of light attendance, it sounds like, but we have a number of items that we'll cover and. Anybody who can't attend will circle back with and then strategic planning meeting for the county is next. Friday. The eleventh. So.
And with that, um, I had an email from district three and she wants date for, uh. Really meeting with them, with district three.
Okay.
Could we do it on the eleventh?
Is it nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock, yes.
Would we be able to fit that in on the eleventh? I mean, to, with district three or, or, or is he talking to? Uh, with the commissioner or with just Commissioner Healy, the meeting with them or?
Full commission.
The full.
But why don't we have them come in on the eleventh while we're all here? That would work. And we got enough time to advertise, well, nobody ever shows up to that anyway, but more than enough time, we're already here and just get it out of the way.
Check into that or do we want to do a separate one?
Doesn't matter to me.
I would be fine with putting it in then.
What time is it to G D meeting ten?
It's at nine A M.
Nine A M.
Yes, it's, yeah, it just depends on how long you think it's.
I, I think we're gonna be, I think we've got quite a few things to discuss at the strategic planning already.
We've got at least an hour and a half.
What about, what about just having if, if district, if it's okay with district three, having them come in at nine, because it's usually a pretty quick meeting, I mean. And, you know, we've all been working with them for a long time now, there shouldn't be any, I wouldn't think any surprises. And come in at nine and then we just go right into strategic planning. After that, we could maybe even put in strategic planning, meet with district three on the agenda and then, you know, there's really. There's no hearings, so we can just roll through it as we go.
Gary, they disagree, might want to, uh. Bring in, uh, revision to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
What do we have, twenty-three delays?
I guess I would be okay with it was at nine A M, that worked for them.
I'll check with them.
Be a fairly limited time, if they want, oh, you know, a lengthier presentation, I think we should schedule something separate. And maybe it coincides with the comprehensive plan.
I'll check with district three and let you guys know in the morning then.
Okay.
Sounds good, thanks.
You'll be here.
Yeah, we'll be here, yep. Nine A M tomorrow. Okay.
Sherry, is that training, is that Friday at one?
Ten. Uh, I think you're signed up for one, Wanda. There's one at ten and there's one at one o'clock.
Okay.
I see you at one o'clock here, Wanda.
Okay, got it.
Okay, if you aren't signed up, you can go either one. There's openings.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-two dash two, subparagraph one, and core relief per South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two, and twenty-eight dash thirteen, and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We're now in executive session. Wanda, do you want to call in, or do you want to exit?
Oh, I can try and call in, I've got a yeah, what number do you want me to call?
I suppose call my phone, I give it out. Enough on, enough to the public. Uh, six zero five, six six one, six four seven two.
Okay. Five, six six one, six four seven two, okay, got it.
Okay, we'll see in a minute, two minutes.
You know, I'm sure
Bye.
Those precincts, yeah. Were by by, um, population, but oh, I know.
If anything, they're gonna lose. Overlooking, ready.
Yep. And also, Don, that out is that sovereign, I think, group. Yep. People cannot understand that we go by precincts, but we don't go by precincts.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay.
They just have some extra, District eighteen voting.
Yep, they just have your legislators on their ballot, the legislators on your ballot.
Entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? We lost one. Motion passes four zero. Uh, items for next meeting.
No action was taken.
Oh, sorry, no action was taken as a result of executive session.
Maybe you have an answer on these, uh, precincts.
Yes, I will look at, start looking at that.
Oh, yeah.
I probably have to put on some for the minutes. We have boxes.
Okay. Thank you. So as of now, we don't have any items on for next, next meeting. Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody fall asleep here?
No, I just wanted to make you guys late for the
President's talking.
Yeah.
President's talking.
Starting, isn't it? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now adjourned.